To order at 7 o'clock on August 6, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now we have an agenda. Our next order of the item is Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cron.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, everyone. Hopefully, everyone's had a wonderful summer. I'd first like to start off today by introducing some of our new leadership in our central office. Some are not new to the division, but they are new to our office here essentially. So first, I'd like to, if you just stand up so the board can see you, Mr. Jason Garrettson is our new Director of Student Services and School Safety. And of course, he's a former principal at Christiansburg Middle School. Good to have you, Jason. Mr. Danny Knott is our new Director of Human Resources, former principal at East Montgomery High School. Ms. Kate Davy is coordinator of VTSS, and she is coming actually back to us from Raff University, T-Tech. So good to have her back. Next, Dr. Tony Walker. Dr. Walker is our new Director of Special Education. Mr. Dominic McKee, our new Assistant Director of Human Resources, who's coming from, as a former principal at Northside High School. And I forgot to mention, Dr. Walker is a former Director of Special Education with the Richmond City Schools. Next, Dr. Robert Johnson is our new Administrator of Student Services, and he's coming to us and was a former Director of the Piedmont Governor's School. So it's great to have all these new folks. And so, thank you. A great new team that we've assembled here.
We're very happy.
Wonderful folks. Absolutely. Ma'am? Well, I think I've introduced, but we do, she didn't come from a different building to here, but of course, I knew Deputy Superintendent, Superintendent Annie Whitaker. And of course, Judy Diggs is in a new position, a Director of VTSS and Equity. All right. We good? Okay. Yes, ma'am. All right. First, I like to just, you know, we finish, when we finish a school year, it's fast and furious and a lot going on. And I just want to highlight some things that happened last school year. And I've got a really good list here. And of course, more happened than the list that I have, but just want to highlight a few things from last year. Our work-based learning program, we had over 500 students that participated last year. Absolutely amazing. We created the, our first ever Fine Arts Diploma Seal, where if you take a certain amount of fine art classes, you'll have a diploma seal placed on your diploma. We implemented a pilot program at Price's Fork for a elementary gifted program, which will be expanding next year. We beefed up our associate's degree program in our high schools. We had 144 students attend the ACE, which is Free Community College, at New River this past year. That's about, I don't know, about 15%, about 20% of our graduating class.
20%.
That's pretty amazing. We continue with the Virginia Tier Systems of Supports this past year. We finished the Falling Branch Elementary Project. It is absolutely a beautiful building. If you haven't been by, I'd encourage anyone to go take a tour of that building. We finished Phase 1 and 2 of the Christiansburg Athletic Projects. We approved the, being able to move forward with renovating Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Bellevue Elementary Schools. We had our second annual Career and Military Signing Day this past year. We expanded recess time this year, one of the first in the states to take advantage of the new law that allows recess time to be counted as actual instructional time. A wonderful story that was done on our school division this past week. On WSLS. I think that's them right there. Good job, guys. All right. Intervention and enrichment time was expanded to our high schools that had already been in our middle schools for a couple of years. And so, we're seeing some positive impacts there. We decreased our out-of-school suspensions by 60% this past year. And how we did that was kids were not, most kids were not sent home to set at home when they made four choices. They were sent to Montgomery Central for a day, and they were able to access their work through their Chromebooks and their Google Classrooms and not get behind. We've gone from number seven in start and pay for teachers to number two in the area, which is a huge, huge accomplishment. Choice PD has continued to be popular with our teachers as well. Our SOL scores are up almost everywhere. One thing that we also are doing, and our folks worked hard to do this, we're moving our operations center to, operations to the old Christiansburg Middle School, which we're calling it the Operations Center now. Our operations, our food service, our IT facilities, transportation, they were in four different buildings, and now they're all in one place, and we're utilizing the old Christiansburg Middle School now to be called the Operations Center. Exciting things that are coming up for this school year that's already been planned. First, I've seen some excitement from parents, especially parents of multiple children. We have electronic registration this year. The electronic registration allows, in many places, if you have more than one kid, you don't have to fill your address out several times. It will actually copy things over. And, you know, our care docs, which is the medical information, is electronic also. Every form from every school is now electronic as well. And our folks have worked so hard to make this happen, especially in IT. Ms. Drake and some IT folks made a wonderful video, and I would encourage everyone to watch the video. I was the, I was sort of the guinea pig in our meeting to see if I could actually sign my kids up for school. And my biggest problem is I don't read directions. And that was made several times. I'm like, well, if you would just read directions. And so, yeah, so read directions. Absolutely. This coming year, we're adding an eighth grade English honors class to our middle schools. We see that as an advantage, eighth grade honors English, especially with the transition to high school and having honors levels courses, where kids can actually, that are at a place where they are, basically, I'll say, reading to learn, and give them a more rigorous class to prepare them for high school. I said, we're expanding the gifted program, the ILEAD program, three other elementary schools. We have 149 students that will be going to community college that just graduated for free. We're continuing to move forward the VTSS model. This is something really exciting. We're adding six STEM teachers to our elementary schools this coming year. Those STEM teachers will teach coding, robotics, and several other things. And this will become a special for elementary schools, students. And what's even better news, it will actually take the place of some guidance. Our guidance counselors have to conduct these special classes with entire classes. So what it's going to do is free our guidance counselors up to have more time to spend with kids that are truly, truly in need. We're getting ready to start our new six-year strategic planning process, which will include thousands of hours and hundreds of people in our community. It's a very comprehensive plan. We're about to start, and hopefully, we'll finish, Phase 3 of the athletic projects at Christiansburg High School, which is the halftime building, concession stands, and really nice bathrooms. So, yeah, very excited about that. We will start the renovation. In fact, something exciting on the agenda tonight is approving the resolution for over $35 million to move forward with the renovations of Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Bellevue Elementary Schools. This year, we've added more cybersecurity, more nursing, more coding, more agriculture and welding in our CTE programs. Something very exciting as well, we're adding a core cadets program. We have over 200 students that are already signed up in our high schools. It is a, it is a form of a junior ROTC program. And in fact, we have arranged at our first meetings of the month, starting next month, they will be presenting our colors at every board meeting, the first meeting of the month for us. Something that's very exciting for students, we have new food coming this year. And if it's anything like they've given us, it is good. I mean, and you know what I can't stop talking about? This is spaghetti sandwich that they serve me. Man, I never had a spaghetti sandwich, but it was absolutely wonderful. But they have given us...
And I tried to make one at home, and it did not. Like what they did, so...
If you can't make your food taste as good as school food, all right.
I tried it. It was bad.
But hey, for the students that are here, I promise you, it is, it is, it's going to be a huge change. It will take, it will take a couple of months to have the full change occur, but the food that they're serving is really good. A lot of the food they're serving is actually from scratch. They'll actually, like, the pizza, they make the pizza that day, I mean, from scratch, which has never happened probably in 40 years. And so, I'm, so very excited about that. Something too, that you'll hear more about tonight, a state-local licensing model. Our school division now has the only approved state-local licensing model for new teachers. In other words, a lot of folks graduate, and then they decide they want to be a teacher. And so, if they, if they're, say, they majored in English, they can come be an English teacher, but they have to go back and take at least five or six classes at the college level. We've actually created our own coursework and been approved by the DOE to give that coursework here while they're teaching and make it relevant to their classes. So we have just created that. It's going to be pretty amazing. We're also starting a mental health advisory committee this year. The committee will be led by Ms. Diggs in our Student Service Department. It will consist of students, parents, teachers, and community members. I met with the students this past week from the Montgomery County Students for Mental Health. We brainstormed many, many ideas as to how we can move forward. We're taking some of those ideas to the actual committee. You know, one idea that we're moving forward with immediately, just for time purposes, is every, every school, every secondary school, they have grade-level assemblies. And so, during those grade-level assemblies, usually what happens is their expectations that are talked about by the, by the principals, the do's, don'ts, and, you know, all the great things that are happening in their schools. We're working on a part of that that will become mental health resources, letting students know about our mental health resources and what they can, how they can actually access them. So we're excited about that. This Friday is our opening session and our first-ever staff field day. Every school has come up with a game to play out on the turf field at Christiansburg High School. We've had to instruct people not to nail stakes in the ground for their tents, but, so we're excited about that and what that's going to look like. And actually, the nutrition group is going to be feeding the teachers, you know, all of you are welcome, and that will start at 10:30. Inside, we foresee it only being 30, 45 minutes inside. We're going to do a quick program, because what we found is most teachers, when they come back, they just want to hang out and have conversations with their friends and their colleagues. And so, we're going to give them a place to do that. We've got a student band from Christiansburg High School that will be performing that day. We've got the drum lines and the cheerleaders from all four high schools that will be cheering the teachers on as they're moving from one place to the other, and it should be a lot of fun. So, and then the next exciting news, students, next Wednesday, August 14th, that's the first day of school. And so, we'll be excited to have everyone back. Everyone's happy, right? Yeah. All right. Wonderful. I know a lot of parents are happy. And so, all right. So that's, that was a lot, but a lot of good stuff.
There's a lot of, thank you. Appreciate it. A lot of exciting things. And I talked to a couple, I think, students at the ice cream shop downtown Blacksburg, and most of them said they are ready to get back.
That's a good sign. Yes, it's mixed in my household.
The next item will be our public address, and at this time, at each our regularly scheduled meeting, school board sets aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the public issues regarding the public education in the county. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and the laptop will show when 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers at this time. This is the time for us to listen to you. And I have four individuals sign up, and I will call each one in the order that they sign up. And please come to the podium, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes. First individual is Roxanna Hartman. Good evening.
My name is Roxanna Hartman, and I live in 404 Clermont Drive in Blacksburg. I'm the mother of two children, two adult children, my daughter Laura, who is visiting from Washington, and my son Mark, 34-year-old man with autism. And he's graduated from Blacksburg High School, the class of 204. As a member of the community, I've been following the issues raised by Montgomery County Schools and the issues presented in Blacksburg High School early in the springs. The Run-o-Time's article on July the 4th opened my eyes. The young adults from Blacksburg High School and their families were so right to hold demonstrations. They understood the teacher candor in talking and sharing with them his journey. Folks, mental illness is real. We are lucky to have Mr. Kraft sharing his journey. I'm aware and I knew several people who had lost their lives because of mental illness, an issue they were never there addressed. Mental health is a problem. But actions such as this dismissal for honesty create a stigma. It's very clear that the Superintendent Amir and the former Director of Human Services Whitaker, along with the members of the school board, with their lack of leadership, held Mr. Kraft hanging like a rabbit until the contract expired. This behavior by administrators, with the blessing of the school board, is callous and leaves a lot to be decided by us, the taxpayers. I just happen to agree with Mr. Kraft. The school board is the ultimate body responsible for the outcomes on issues such as this. If fate could be different and you had worked in the private sector, there would be no doubt that you all, particularly the superintendent, will be fired a long time ago. The morale in the county has been very low for some time, and still in the end of the year, with the travestit signals, the worst opening in all years for Montgomery County Schools. The board 23 years ago fired a superintendent with only three years in the job. Then morale was low, as it is today. I quote from one of the school members at the time, "Morale is not something that you teach. Morale is an attribute. You have to be, you have to be a leader and inspire the system." Along the way, the superintendent made some really bad choices, has bad, had this one.
Ms. Hartman, your time is up. Thank you.
The difference between then and now was the leadership.
Ms. Hartman, your time is up. Thank you. Next individual is Cedric Christensen.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Meyer. My name is Cedric Christensen, and I reside at 604 Newman Lane in Blacksburg, Virginia. I wish to speak with you today about the discussion of Mr. Kraft's mental health that occurred during the fourth block of Mr. Kraft's APUs History Course a few months ago. I hope that my presence in that room, combined with my own personal experience of the tragedy that can accompany depression and mental health issues, can provide some form of novel insight for those present as we move forward as a community to consider when and where these conversations surrounding mental health are appropriate. A little over a year before the conversation in question occurred, my aunt and godmother, Meg Christensen, committed suicide. She had struggled for some time with issues of depression and alcoholism, and I'd witnessed much of what had led up to her passing. At my aunt's funeral, I witnessed the pain of a parent burying their child, and I witnessed it made worse by the societal stigma surrounding mental health and suicide. At the time of my aunt's death, my grandparents felt pensive and uncertain about publicly sharing the way that my aunt had died, and initially didn't acknowledge it even amongst friends and family. My grandparents felt pressured to keep that particular kind of pain bottled up because of a cultural discomfort with the topic of mental health and suicide, and by fear that they might be blamed for not having done enough. I can say that I have also felt that stigma. Although my family, friends, and instructors could not have been more sympathetic and supportive during that time, I also avoided talking about why I had left school, and I didn't inform some of my closest friends of what had happened until months after, and I've certainly never felt comfortable discussing her passing in a public forum such as this one. However, I felt compelled to speak at this event when, in a joint statement for Mr. Kraft and Dr. Meyer, I noticed that there was still a belief that the conversation Mr. Kraft had was viewed as inappropriate for that setting. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe that the high schools should strive to live, to support the lives of their students through an exposure to knowledge that they themselves are often unable to acquire through mere life experience. From history to science to English, my classes at Blacksburg High School have broadened my worldview in ways that I could not have imagined, and Mr. Kraft's conversation taught me more than any number of hours of lectures on U.S. history could have. The stigma that Mr. Kraft chose to resist was the same stigma that could cause shame in my grandparents and the same stigma that I have felt whenever I discussed my aunt's passing. Whether I like it or not, I was forced to confront the harsh realities of mental health, and I went into that difficult time in my life without the broad base of empathetic experiences to not have my worldview shaped entirely by that tragedy. However, by discussing mental health in the way that he did, Mr. Kraft changed me forever. The way that Mr. Kraft spoke about his mental health felt in many ways to be the exact opposite of the narrative that I had told myself after my aunt passed away. He was able to approach the conversation of survival, struggle, and resilience in the face of hardship with the humility and strength that I needed. Mr. Kraft provided an example of what a successful utilization of mental health care can look like, and reminded me that asking for help is never a sign of weakness. While it may seem easier to simply avoid the pain associated with these conversations, I know firsthand that we cannot run from this problem. What Mr. Kraft did was not easy. He fought against a stream of stigmatization and ignorance for the sake of himself, his students, and our community. If he had not had the conversation with us in the way that he did, I think that my perspective on mental health would still be what it was in the months after my aunt passed away, jaded, angry, and hopeless. I had only ever seen what it looked like when our mental health care system and our society failed to save a life. Mr. Kraft showed me what it looks like when they succeed. I'm extremely grateful to him for this, and I hope that he knows that the impact he had on me and others was profound. I would like to thank the school board for the time, and I hope they seriously consider how these conversations can impact their students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Carson Hopkins. Please come, state your name and address.
My name is Carson Hopkins, and I live at 2697 Big Falls Road, Blacksburg. I wanted to start with thanking the last two people who just presented. You guys are awesome. But over the course of this year, I have appeared before you all many times. In March, I felt as if there was a large injustice committed in our county, and thanks to an outpouring of community support and the efforts of student activists, dedicated teachers, and the collaborative efforts put forth by our central office, I believe we are on the road to change. As Dr. Meyer previously mentioned, last week, student activists wrote a list of new requests on how to improve mental health policy and resources in the classrooms of Montgomery County. After talking with members of our county administration, they have agreed to nearly all of our requests. Per our current agreement, a council will be formed by September 1st that will begin to implement new policies, engage community input on mental health de-stigmatization. By the September 1st deadline, the following policies and changes should have either already taken place or will be written and pending approval from the council. Firstly, due to the concern from the community, Mental Health Days will now be factored into the list of reasons for excused absences for students. Parents will no longer have to worry about needing to send their children to school when their mental state is not in the right place to do so. Secondly, student leaders from every high and middle school around the county will lead assemblies during the first and second week of this school year to discuss mental health resources for students in school and to work towards the end goal of de-stigmatizing mental health issues. Next, every teacher in secondary schools around the county will receive at a minimum basic training on how to spot and address signs of mental health issues in students. To ensure there is not a repeat of, there is not a repeat of previous events, we have reached an agreement that explicit writing defining the boundaries of mental health conversations in the classroom will be written in the MCPS Teacher Handbook or County Policy and protect teachers that choose to engage in these conversations in a constructive manner. Lastly, an investigation will be launched on how to best provide students with the appropriate training to help their peers with mental health issues. Now, I understand that you have no reason to believe the promises that have been set by our administration. It is the same organization that we have spoken against in the boardroom, sat against the schoolhouse steps, and rode against in the press. This presentation will be continued by my fellow activist and friend, Christian Shushak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person is Christian Shushak.
My name is Christian Shushak. I live at 331 Airport Road. So first off, I want to thank Carson for the great job she just did presenting, and I also want to thank the two people that spoke before her, because I think those stories are really important, and they're something that we need to recognize. And I can't promise that the changes we're working on are going to end stigmatization, but I can hope that we can do something, and for right now, I think that's enough. I also want to thank the mental health supervisors and county administrators for being open to collaboration with students. While I wish this collaboration could have happened at an earlier date, I feel that positive steps are being made nonetheless. As Carson stated earlier, there are five major changes the MCPS has promised to enact or to have prepared to enact by our September 1st deadline. These changes are absolutely crucial for our students, not just to assist those that have mental health issues, but also to move towards de-stigmatization both in and outside of the classroom. Now that these policies and doctrines have been assured, it is up to you, the people of our school system, to ensure that they are implemented. I know that we are angry. Believe me when I say that I want justice for every student and teacher in this county, but we can no longer allow our anger to drive us alone. Anger has fueled our fight, but anger alone cannot breed change. For anger, when left unkempt, putrefies into bitterness. Bitterness bleeds the roots of activism dry, and we cannot fall into the trap of choosing to let our activism breed anger when we have the chance to let our anger breed activism. Principals and empathy, when expressed in their purest forms, incite revolution. I am standing before the board tonight not to address the elected representatives in front of me, but rather to make an appeal to the citizens behind me. We have been given promises of change, and as of now, the future looks bright. But promises are volatile. In the moment, we, the people, are the masters of our own fate, precariously balanced upon the oblivion of the status quo. If we seek to procure a better future for our schools, we now must turn our anger into activism and hold our representatives accountable for the promises that they have made to us. It was the great Maya Angelou that said, "So use that anger, yes. You write it, you paint it, you dance it, and you march it. You vote it. You do everything about it. You talk it. Never stop talking it." So I say to you tonight, commend the administration for the changes that they have promised, but do not for a single moment surrender and follow their promises. Instead, lead them. Thank you.
That's the end of the speakers. Thank you for all speaking, and public address is now closed. Next agenda item is our consent items. Is there anything from the consent agenda you would like to pull aside, or are you yet a chance to look at it? Field trips, and then the grand proposal for Christiansburg High School Black Wellness Club. If you're all good, our consent agenda is approved as it is. Next item will be paying our bills. May I have a motion to approve the bill payments for year-end 2018-19 as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. The second one is the current bills. May I have a motion to approve our current payment of the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any question regarding the current bills? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item on the agenda, our business part of the meeting, and it starts with the electronic meeting participation approval. Marty Graham has asked to participate in tonight's meeting electronically as she's out of town. May I have a motion to approve her participation in tonight's meeting electronically?
So moved.
My motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now we have, do you want me to wait, Ms. Drake, for her electronic participation, or you're good?
I'm good. She's calling in Mr. Goodman right now, and he'll get piped in so she can hear the audio.
Okay, so I can, you want me to continue? All right, sounds good. Next item is our board member reports. Board members, anything to share at this time, besides being away and have some fun?
Well, nobody else, actually, even though we were off in July, and I'll take that to get a lot done. Actually, even though we were off in July, and I take that to get a lot done, I did get... My granddaughter is going to Auburn Elementary Preschool this year, so I got to go and meet everyone there with them, and it was really exciting. After having my other granddaughter go to Fallen Branches Preschool, what a fabulous experience that was. I know this one will be just as fabulous, so I'm excited about that, but it was nice to get to go and do that. And this kind of really isn't a school function, but I kind of have to say something about it. I helped the Quanis Club sell tickets to a gospel concert that they were sponsoring at Christiansburg High School, July 12th, and it ended up being a huge success. The Hoppers came, and then a friend of mine actually opened a forum. And I guess I didn't realize the great things that the Quanis Club does for our students and in our schools and just for all the students, and I just, I had to make sure that I mentioned that. And, you know, and partly too, I was so proud of our school. It looked so nice, I mean, for a huge group like that to come to our community. It was just, I just felt very, very... Proud? Yeah, I mean, proud of what we have, and I want to thank everybody for that because it takes a community. But I just had to mention that because I really didn't realize how much the Quanis did for our kids. And talking about the ACE program earlier, I have to touch bases on that. Abby just got her 80 hours in by helping with the tourism group in Blacksburg, which she had a phenomenal experience and got to share with many different people while she was there, you know, when she was getting her 80 hours in. And when you say community service, people are like, "Well, what did you do?" You know? And she was like, "No, it's for the ACE program." And it's just great that she could talk so positively about it along with one of the other... Her friends did a presentation at the Christiansburg Town Council meeting, and she did a fabulous job, and, you know, it was almost like, "Oh, my gosh." And I was there to hear it, so I was so proud of her too, and just all the positive things she had to say about the ACE program. So it's just great that we've got kids that truly appreciate what they're getting and, you know, couldn't be more proud of it.
Thank you, Ms. Buck. And I did, I think, two little things or maybe one little, one big thing. One of them, I went to Marguerite Pig's Elementary School baking camp, and it was pretty good. I tasted what they bake, and I had some fabulous, I think it was a smoothie, and it was very good. So those little friends were baking, and they were having fun. And the other one is we attended with Ms. Riggs and Natalie and Dr. Robinson. We went to Richmond for the Equity Conference, and I thought of you a lot, and we had a good time, and I know we learned a lot, and I know, I'm happy that, you know, they were with me, so I don't have to actually share anything at this time, but it was exciting. You know, it was a good conference, and I was happy to be part of it. And I know we're going to do great things under Ms. Riggs's leadership, and in that conference, one surprising thing is very little division have an Equity Officer. So we are again in the forefront of many school divisions, and I always come back very proud, so that will wrap up our board member...
Oh, I'm not sure if I mentioned this. I don't, I don't, can't remember if I mentioned this or not, but I did have a meeting with Mr. Sizemore, our new principal at Harding, so, and that went very well. I'm excited, you know, for the new school year with him and with that staff. I think he'll be a good fit. And, yeah, other than that, it was just the time off. Which I think our, also our staff appreciates, not just, obviously, some of our teachers who work, you know, nine or 10-month contracts get that time off, but even the ones that work year-round, having that flexible Friday in the summer, I think, is something that's really appreciated. So, yeah, commend you guys for adding that flexibility in.
I'd like to brag on Ms. Karan. Speaking of Harding Elementary School, we had a family that transferred into Harding Elementary School and moved here from Turkey. So I guess we'll be called upon to be the translator for the family.
I actually, you know, had a hard time to translate, and I mixed up completely. I turned to Mr. Sizemore spoke Turkish, and then I turned to families. And I was like, little broken Turkish, but I'm going to meet with them in the first day of school. I'll be there, so if she has... But I talked to him recently, and she's really looking forward to, you know, come to school, and I'm pretty sure within a couple of months, she'll be probably very...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Bilingual. You're welcome. That was fun. And we are... The next one is the teacher licensure model.
Yes. And I mentioned this earlier, we're excited to present information on our new teacher licensure model that's been approved by the state. Let's see, Annie, Jonathan, Dominic will provide more information regarding this.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Wonderful. I have Dominic, Mickey, and Jonathan with me tonight, and wanted to talk to you a little bit about something we are very excited about, and I know we've shared a little bit about with you in the past, but we are just so proud to say today that this program has been approved. The reason that we looked at putting this into place is because of, as you know, there's a critical shortage of teachers. The number of individuals who are entering the profession are declining, and we really need access to high-quality teachers for our students. So to give you a little bit of perspective on it, and I'm sorry the date is from 1617, but that's kind of the way it gets released by the state on these critical shortage areas. In that year, there were 887 unfilled teaching positions. Last year, I believe that number was closer to 1,000. So if you put that into perspective across the state and say the average class size is 24 kids, 1,000 teachers, all of those children were without qualified teachers in their classrooms, and those school divisions had to figure out what they were going to do. We are fortunate to not be in that place right now, but we do see the trend coming and an increase of those who enter the field through provisional license, and the goal of our program is to really be prepared for that. And so you can see, you know, during that year, there were 718 teachers who were teaching outside of their area, and then about 5%, 6,000 teachers who are teaching on a provisional license. Dominic's going to share some data with you later about what that looks like for Montgomery County, but really, this is the rationale behind why we were looking at this type of program. Teacher preparation enrollment is down about 35%, which I thought, "Oh, 35%? What a number." So that's approximately 240,000 teachers that are not going into college every year. Those are individuals who would have been entering the teaching profession that aren't. So when you look at that, 240,000 people per year less entering the teaching profession, we really feel like we have to get ahead of this and figure out what is it that we're going to do so that we are prepared when they are not coming out. Our goal is always to hire the most qualified teacher and to have them come through a traditional route, but we do need to be prepared for when they are not graduating from those programs. As you know, teacher retention is very important. Those first couple of years are very difficult, and that is the time during which teachers are most likely to leave their profession because they don't feel supported or qualified as in the beginning. So we really wanted to make sure to do that. Our alternatively licensed teachers leave at a faster rate than those who enter through a traditional program. So we know we're going to be getting more people who aren't coming through the traditional route, and we know we're less likely to keep people that aren't coming through the traditional route because the same supports aren't in place. In addition, there's a lot of data that shows that one of four teachers in colors are entering the teaching profession through those alternative pathways, and we need to be prepared to provide the appropriate training and make sure that our students have access to the best teachers. Sorry. So our goal, our goal was let's plan for the future, let's be prepared for this. There is, there has been for quite some time a provision within the Code of Virginia that allows for a school division to submit a plan for a local licensure model for the professional studies requirements. That's a big mouthful. What does that mean? It means people who, say, have a bachelor's degree... I started provisionally. I had a bachelor's degree in English. I went back to get my teaching certificate. I went to student teaching a school, and they said, "We're going to hire you." And so I was teaching within two weeks of that and had not completed my teacher prep program. That's what a provisional license is. You complete the coursework while you're actually teaching. So the goal of our program was a couple of things. One, we want to address the looming teacher shortage. We want to make sure that we're providing sustained, high-quality training and to support those teachers so that they will be the most successful that they can. You know, we know that as soon as our students enter the classroom, enter the doors of our school, the biggest impact on their education is our teachers. That is, who is going to make the biggest impact for our kids once they're with us, and we want to make sure that they're well-prepared. Oh, I went too far, didn't I? That, we'll go that way. There we go, okay. So how do we want to do that? There's a couple of things we wanted to do. We wanted to ensure that the individuals who are coming through our program are getting everything that they would have gotten if they were going through a traditional route. They're exposed to all the competencies and all of the material that they would need to, that those experiences are scaffolded for them. We'll explain what we mean a little bit more, but essentially giving them what they need when they need it. That they're getting timely, job-embedded training, that they're getting credit for the work that they're doing in their teaching, and that that is being applied to what they are learning in the classroom, and then also providing them intensive support, feedback, and coaching throughout that process. So with that professional studies, there's five classes. Is this one starting? Okay. There's five classes that are, they have to take traditionally through the college route. Those would be Human Development and Learning, Curriculum and Instruction, Classroom and Behavior Management, Assessment of and for Learning, Foundations of Education in the Teaching Profession. There's a sixth, which is Language and Literacy, which we did not address at this time, but when we met to meet with the state, they said, "You have to put in your letter that you will do this." So we were really excited to hear that part. They want us to tackle that project next. Jonathan's going to tell you a little bit more.
Good evening. So we had a team of folks at this point that worked on this through the spring, in March and April, so that was Annie and myself, several of the folks are here. So if you were here and worked on that team, stand up real quick or wave. Mark Husband, Carl, Barbara, Pat Nelson as well, will help us with that. And so essentially, if you think about what this looks like as a provisionally licensed teacher, so you have your degree, you get hired to teach, and now you're going to pay to take these five or six classes on your own. So you're either going to do it, you're going to pay to go to a local college, or you're going to do it through Regents or, you know, University of Phoenix or something like that, you're going to pay to take those classes. You're going to take them in, you're going to have to go through them kind of one at a time. You're going to do them in the evening in addition to the work that you're already doing. So what we, our task from the state was to figure out, how do we make this happen? How do we get this to work? So what we did was go to the Code of Virginia, the same way a university would, and unpack what the Code of Virginia says has to be done in those courses. So we identified the 118 things that have to happen in those first five courses, and then just kind of broke them down and rearranged them. So our goal was to figure out, how do we come up with a better way to get teachers the, all the resources that they need, but they said that they're not in a situation where they're a first-year teacher, it's the hardest time to be a teacher, and they're spending time in the evenings on coursework that's not necessarily helping them today on the things that they need to get better in the classroom. So that was sort of our guiding method. So as Annie mentioned, what we did was, we, once we identified those 118 pieces, we decided, okay, what do they need to survive right up front, and how do we structure a program to do that? So we basically took those 118 topics, we broke it down to, we started off, what are the first 36 things they need to see in that first semester? What do they have to know? Because it doesn't make sense to do a whole class on assessment in your first semester when what you really needed was classroom management, or to do only a class on all classroom management when you're not able to plan for your lessons. And so what we did was break them apart and put them back together in kind of an integrated approach to say, "Here's how you're going to work on lesson planning. Here's how you're going to work on classroom management. Here's what you have to have, and here's how we're going to break those pieces up over time." So what that does for us is a couple of things. One, instead of your classroom, you know, doing your coursework projects being something separate and in addition to your, what you need to do for your job, what you do for your job, we're going to help you document and get better at, so that's what you're getting credit for. You're not doing side projects. The second piece of that is, we want to make it so that you're not going to do a course, and then you're done with it, and now you know everything there is to know about classroom management. So by breaking it apart and being able to scaffold it over a 30-month program, which is the first two and a half years that they're with us, we're going to be able to have people get gradually better and better and better. So they're going to work on lesson planning and document their lesson planning work every nine weeks for two and a half years. They're going to work on classroom management all the time. They're going to work on working with parents. They're going, all these different pieces, we're going to thread through. Things that are, need to be checked off but are less, you know, less urgent, like the history of education and some other pieces like that, there'll be isolated online modules that they will check off to say that they've done those pieces. So that's our structure, is if we want you to survive, we want you, the work that you're doing to get your license, we want to be the work that we know will make you successful in the classroom anyway. Our model is to be split up over 30 months. It's the whole, the first two and a half years that they're with us. We will start off with each year, we'll start off with five extra days at the front where they'll, we have those days built in for those teachers, and we will pay them to come in and get running with a summer academy where they have some intensive time with each other and with curriculum supervisors or with principals or with other leadership or lead teachers who will help provide instruction for them. When they first get hired, they'll participate in our new teacher academy, as our teachers have just done this past week, are all of our new teachers. We want to make sure that the things that happen in, that the things that they already had to do for their job, they're getting credit for. So Barbara and Carl just did great work with all of our brand-new teachers, and any of those things that were related to that coursework, we're going to make sure that folks are getting credit and documenting that work that they've done. We'll use all the days that we have available to us. We'll use workdays when we have them. We'll use early release days when we'll have them. We'll have them try to pull together after school on different occasions. And the biggest thing is that we're going to provide ongoing coaching and support. So administrators that are working closely with them all the time, giving them feedback and helping them, help guide their progress through this, but also, you know, real high-level mentoring that stays with them to try to keep them successful in the program. Dominic will take it from there.
Good evening. When I first learned about this, I wish I had this when I was a principal, former principal, because I was salivating when Annie and Jonathan were telling me about it, because I took over a building that had 75 teachers, and of those 75, 31 were provisional. So they struggled tremendously, and there's only a certain amount of administrators in the building that can help and coach the central office. So the support that you guys have in Montgomery County is phenomenal to implement this program to help teachers move forward. Now, with something like this, we have to have assessments, just like the kids are given SOLs and the teachers use the curriculum and blueprints to figure out exactly what they need to do in the classroom. We have to be able to have some to make sure it's aligned with the Virginia Standards for Professional Practice of Teachers. And what does that mean? We're looking at several standards like professional knowledge, instructional planning, instructional delivering, assessment of and for student learning, learning environment, and professionalism. So those things that we will look for when the teachers are going through this program. And also, it's not any, anything in addition, so they'll be completing a portfolio while they're going through this program, so at the end of the program, they will be able to submit that portfolio to prove all the different things that they've done within the program. And also, success in the classroom is success in the program. So if teachers are successful in this, they'll get coaching, they'll get guidance throughout each, you know, each assignment that they'll have, all the 30 months that they'll have, they'll get that, they'll get that program, they'll get that guidance to make sure that they're successful within this program. Also, if someone decides to leave before the 30 months is up, they don't get any credits whatsoever being part of this program, so they have to start a provisional over, or it just won't be a very good outcome for them. So they have to be committed to Montgomery County Public Schools for the 30 months, and once they, once they complete it, they will have their license. Eligibility. With the eligibility, you probably wondered, "Well, who's eligible?" The past hiring, we had, we hired 101 teachers this past hiring season. Of those 101 teachers, 13 are provisional teachers. So those are the ones that we're going to target to meet with them on August the 27th. We already have a date set up. We're going to bring them in, tell them about the overview of the program and what we're going to do for them. And also, beginning in 2020, all new provisionally licensed teachers that are hired by MCBS will participate in the program. So the big thing with this is we're looking to retain the teachers to make sure they have the knowledge and the work ethic to get through this program. I'll turn it back over to Annie.
So Dominic is going to, from the human resources standpoint, he's going to be really the administrator of this program for us. We're really fortunate because it's, we're going to have an opportunity to pull the best of the best together. So where maybe if you're taking a traditional course, you have one teacher. You may have in one of our modules, seven different people working with you. in one of our modules, seven different people working with you. Who's that teacher who's best at classroom management? We want them to come and work with the teachers. Who is the individual who has the strategies of tiered intervention? We're going to pull our tiered intervention specialists in to work with them. So they're really going to get access to the best of the best. We don't have to bring anybody in from the outside. We have very excellently trained and qualified employees right in our division who can provide this training for us. That's also going to empower those individuals and help to build even more sense of community within this school division. There is no mistake in the way we develop the program, that it perfectly aligns with the things we know make people stay in a job. So there's four things that show that help with teacher retention. It's compensation, you guys took care of that for us last year, we appreciate that. Effective training and preparation, that means doing things that are meaningful. If we're asking teachers to make sure meaningful learning is happening in our classrooms for our students, that's what we should be doing for our teachers. So we want to make sure it's meaningful learning, it's embedded in their job, they're getting an opportunity to get feedback on what they're doing, they know it's okay to ask for help, and they're going to become better practitioners by being embedded in this program. They're going to have the support of coaches and mentors, they're going to have a portfolio that's ongoing, so it's easy for their administrator to see where they might need some additional support, to see the things that they're really excelling in, and for us to really get a good view that's very well-aligned with the state's standards. They're going to know why they're being evaluated on things, and they're going to understand better what the state expects of them, and instruction as well as what Montgomery County is expecting. And so the teaching conditions as well are embedded right into that. We're, we're creating a positive culture of support, we're saying we value your time, we value your money. So that's five classes that they're not going to be taking somewhere else, and taking their paycheck and turning it right over to a university. It will cause, and there's nothing against universities, we certainly want people to still go through those programs. But lots of times, we have people who want to be teachers, and they can't afford to quit their jobs, or they can't go back to school full-time. Last year, we had an interest meeting, and we didn't even have to advertise. We had almost 60 people from our community with bachelor's degrees who wanted to be teachers, but they needed a program like this so that they could teach and also learn and, and make that income at the same time. So we feel like we put those four pieces together to make a model that would work, and not just, not just scratch the surface. We don't want it to be the minimum. We want this to be an excellent program, and we want teachers to come out feeling like, I am extremely prepared, and I really feel like others will look and go, man, I wish I had had access to that kind of training when I was going through a teacher prep program as well. So we were super excited. We didn't foresee the turnaround by the state so quick, but they were as excited as we were. Jonathan and I went to meet with them and thought we would get them to poke a whole bunch of holes and tell us all the things to fix, and actually, they said, hurry up and finish and bring it to us so we can approve it. So we got the official letter a couple of weeks ago and are super excited. Most of the modules would start in July, but since we just got approval, we're going to start mid-year this year, start mid-year with the folks that are with us, and then work them through the program. So we really appreciate your willingness to support innovation, to allow us to try these new types of things, and we really do feel like it's going to be a great thing for the students in Montgomery County. Do you have any questions for me?
No, how many divisions are going to be after us to copy this?
They have already started. They have already started contacting us.
Another thing that I will come back and be very proud.
That's right, that's right.
Well, keep an eye towards, I'm sure you are, you know, going to take metrics and, 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 you know, try to measure the effectiveness, and I would say just kind of keep an eye toward, this is something that I think could be a really good future, you know, V S B A topic that we could present on, hopefully. I mean, I, I expect that it's going to be successful, so I don't even want to say if it's going to be successful.
We are sure that it will.
Yeah. So you answered one of my questions, and the other question I was going to ask is, on the timeline, for people who, for teachers who do not quit and go back full-time, how, what's the timeframe typically for them to get their, their licensure?
So until this year, that was three years. So they had three years to go from their provisional to their full license. And if they didn't complete it within the three years, they were done, and they could never go back and finish. This year, the Code of Virginia changed to extend it up to five years. My personal belief is that's in response to the shortage. There are some other legislation changes that are going into place as well to address the teaching shortage, but they've extended it up to five now, which gives us more time to work with individuals and to make sure they're well-prepared.
But our program is 30 months, right?
It is.
And it used to be three years, it's 36 months, so that's a little bit shorter.
Sure.
But I think the, the important thing, it sounds like from your presentation, isn't just the length of time, but that they're not spending extra time doing these other things, that they're actually, it should save them time.
That's right, when they're learning discipline, they're going to learn it with their students, and they're going to be able to come to the cohort and say, you know, here's something that I'm working through, what are some strategies I should try? And they'll be able to go back and implement that in the classroom, they'll be able to work with their coach and their mentor, and really learn as they go, you know? It's hard to take classroom management in a box when you've never been alone in a room with a group of students. It's very different when there's no other adult there. And so they are going to have that reinforcement, and they're going to have someone they can say to, help, I need some assistance. And we do that through our traditional, you know, mentoring now, but it's a little different when you haven't had any of that classroom, you know, learning at the university level. The 36 months is because we wanted to make sure to get them done before we would determine if we were going to put them on continuing contract status. So they'll finish in December of that year, and they'll have their portfolio complete so that we are able to determine, are we going to give them a continuing contract for the next year?
But would, am I correct that the potential would exist? You could, you would then have two and a half years of fantastic data on the teacher's performance and work. And so if you had somebody that was not quite there, well, then that's the person we'd want to extend to the fourth year and say, and here's exactly what you're going to work on next year, what we're going to do to get you your license and your contract.
Yeah.
So that, to me, that's a, the two go very nicely together.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
So the Department of Education, have any requirements as far as, you know, coming back and reporting?
They certainly would like us to share this information. I believe the letter, you know, said that they believe this innovative model will be a standard for other school divisions, so they certainly were, you know, I worked a really hard, really long time trying to find out, what is it you need from us to get this approved? And I kept calling and saying, what do we need to do? And there was no answer because there really was no model in place. And we said, that's okay, we'll do it, we'll, we'll figure that out for you. And so we, that's what we did, we took on the project, it was a great team that worked together on it. And so they will certainly be wanting feedback from us, and want to look at how that's going and want us to share it with other divisions, because the shortages, you know, we all share kids across divisions. They may be our student today, but they might be someone else's student tomorrow. So what's best for all kids is really going to impact everybody.
Talking about the shortage, as far as students wanting to go into teaching from the beginning, you know, when I first want, wanted to be a hairdresser, I asked one of the older hairdressers, you know, hey, do you got any promising words? Don't do it. And sad to say, you know, I mean, I, I, not every day's easy. I don't get a lunch every day, I don't go home before 6:30. It's, I clean and do deposits and all that at night. I went in Sunday and did somebody's hair. I mean, so I think every profession has its negatives, and sometimes we as a society want to see the negatives that are in our profession. And I would love to see something that, hey, let's, if, you gotta be, you gotta like, you love your job, or find what made you want to be a teacher. Sometimes as we get older, we get cranky, you know? And, and sometimes that shows. And, you know, I really, some days have to reach down and find out what makes me love my job every day. And I think that's something that we really have to do, because these students that are coming out, sometimes if they, if they're being told, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it, it's too hard, you don't make any money, you know, why would they want to? So I think we have to do something there, too.
I agree with you, and sometimes we can be our own worst enemy in any profession.
All of them, all of them.
Teaching is extremely hard. It is a very, very difficult job. It is a lot of work, there are a lot of requirements. It's because it's really important, you know? We are, we are forming the foundation of someone's educational life and what their future is, and that's hard work, and it's a big responsibility.
But it's very rewarding.
It's very rewarding.
And when those students come back to you and say, you made my life different.
That's right.
And we hear it all the time, that's what makes it possible, and what makes people want to do it, you know what I mean? I think we've got to reach down deep and find out why teachers love their job really.
They do.
They do. You know, we just have bad days and...
That's right. Well, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, thanks for all your hard work.
It's so exciting.
All right, next, V S B A media honor roll. The V S B A media honor roll recognizes media organizations for a balanced and accurate approach to sharing with the community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the teachers and students. Tonight, we're asking you to approve Lindsey Ward and Greg Moore from W S L S for placement on the V S B A media honor roll for this year. And they were the ones who just did the recess story on us recently.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution nominating Lindsey Ward and Greg Moore from W S L S for the V S B A media honor roll?
Some move.
We have multiple motions and seconds. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve our media honor roll.
Okay, thank you. Next, M C P S policy revisions. Mr. Pauli found three policies that needed to be updated prior to the start of the school year in August. We provided a brief explanation of each policy, updating your agenda. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve these policy changes as presented, and there were some things, Mr. Pauli, if you come up, please? That we asked that a couple of things be changed at the last meeting, and...
We were able to do those.
You were able to do that with no, no issue?
Yes, the, the ones that I was asked to look at were to add high school in front of the word course in six dash four point two. I actually added high school credit, high school credit course, and that was a good catch. And there was another one removing the, the words for the first time in, in reference to when students enter Montgomery County Public Schools from homeschooling or non-accredited schools. It really is irrelevant whether it's first time, second time, or third time, so it was a good catch to remove that as well. If there were other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Let me make a motion to approve the policy revisions as presented.
Some move.
I have a motion and second now. Any more discussion, any more questions regarding them? I know we saw them in first meeting in June, I think, the first reading, it's a long time ago, it seems like.
Me neither.
I know, I remember that, oh my gosh, yes.
I think they just done some good revisions here.
Thank you. Absolutely, yes ma'am, that was the intent.
Yeah.
And to clarify a few things that really we've been practicing, but did not have the policy didn't match.
If no more discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our...
Thank you.
Policy revisions, thank you, Mr. Pauli.
Okay, next, incumbences.
We needed a roll call. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We needed to have a roll call, right? Because it's a policy, sorry. Even though we are handful of us here, but...
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Trebaka?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Kiran?
Yes. I jumped in front, sorry, Marty.
That's okay.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Okay. That's all right. Next, incumbences for open purchase orders.
School, school crisis plans.
I'm sorry, school crisis plans, I'm reading too far ahead. School crisis plans, you provided an electronic copy of your school crisis plans for the meeting tonight. We'll ask you to approve these plans at the August 20 school board meeting. It's required that we're, that we have these approved by the end of August, although we want to get them done as close to beginning of school as possible. Mr. Garrison's here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. You know, probably like six emails have to cover all the crisis plan, so you must have received four or five emails from him. Each has each school division's crisis plans attached. So that's the whole crisis plan in an actual form, it's a this big a binder, I think, if I remember right. So, but there was a cover for the new changes, the overview. So that was a good, good part of it, I think, so we can look at the overviews first, if you don't want to look everything. Any questions regarding that right now, Mr. Garrison?
You're exactly right.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Emails get coming.
We, we tried to organize them by community, by attended zone. And again, as you've stated, we, we did try to organize kind of a summary overview document so that you're really able to go in and pick out the specific school pieces, because we really rewrote the plans last year. A lot of the content's very similar. So if you use the overview document, you can see those school-specific items, and we did try to tag those to pages, so if you do want to look in the plan and see them within a context, you, you can. But certainly, any questions between now and the next meeting, please feel free to contact me directly, I'll do my best to answer, and if I'm not sure, I'll confirm with the school.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Krantz coming up, incumbences for open purchase orders, this letter's to, is for information purposes, and will be sent to the county administrators tomorrow. We've already notified the county about our open purchase orders, so they can anticipate the expenditures. These open incumbences are good, goods and services that have been ordered, but you have not been received. And so this is something that happens every year, might seem a little odd. This year, because it usually goes in July, and we do not meet in July, and in the June meeting, if you can remember, you give me the authority to move it on, and so we were later getting it, so since we're in August, you're seeing it before the...
Board of Supervisors.
The Board of Supervisors, which approve, approve our incumbences. Basically, it's what we've already bought, and we're waiting to pay the bill or have the work done.
Correct.
Right? Any questions about that? Okay. Next, supplemental appropriation. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $1.49 million. More than 1 million of the funds are in unanticipated revenue due to increased enrollment in the district, once the state calculated our average membership. A large portion of the funds will be spent on updating the new operations center to house transportation. The, you know, from the money that was appropriated at the beginning of last year, we spent all but about $350,000, which in a hundred and...
Hundred and twenty, almost a hundred, well, federal funds and all.
So we, we spent almost everything last year.
Correct.
Now, what happened was, of course, we had kids continue to enroll, so we ended with more, more funding at the end of the year than we anticipated. And what we would like to do with the, most of the additional funding, a lot of it is grants, things that we really have no control over that just carry over. How much of that is, of it is that, Tom?
Almost about half of it slightly.
So we have about $700,000?
Roughly, seven to eight hundred thousand, it's just gets split between the technology, which is the E-rate investment we need to make on E-rate, and then the capital projects and maintenance.
And so with this money, I, I think we're using it very wisely, we like to, you know, we're moving all of our operations, and at some point, we're going to take all of you there to let you see the, see what, you'll be amazed what has happened to that building, it's, it's coming alive. And, and then too, we're transforming the bus garage in, the gymnasium into a bus garage, and it will be about two and a half times the size, and actually be able to put lifts in the garage. A current garage does not have lifts, it's a, three bays, and that's it, I believe, very small.
Yes, sir.
Very antiquated. And, and so it's going to make for a nice facility. And plus, we'll, we'll be able to convert the field out front into a bus lot where all of our buses will fit. And so far, everyone has moved there. Our warehouse is there, new school nutrition, purchasing, IT.
Been very positive.
Very positive, absolutely. Facilities will move there next. And then transportation will move there after that. And a lot of space. We're going to actually have the, the old library there, will, will be converted into a professional development room. And when it's a very nice, I mean, there are nice upgrades that were done when the, when Blacksburg Middle School had to move there.
Right.
And so, you know, we're, we're taking advantage. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's like the professional development room. It's like brand-new carpet in there. It's, it's really nice. So, you know, so we need to spruce it up around the, around the grounds a little bit and, and do some painting, maybe.
Yes, sir.
But the folks have really, and, and they're already talking about, those operational groups have to work together. And they're already talking more. And, and they're communicating more between themselves. And they've really enjoyed that already. You know, and I, I know while we're talking about them, let me say, I, this summer, they were given probably more things to get done than any time I've ever seen. And the amount of work that our operations departments have done is absolutely amazing. It really is. They've done some incredible work throughout our school division. And because of their work, we're, we're going to be ready to open. Next, Harding, we're getting, we're going to be real close.
Harding, start.
But we will be ready to open when the kids come next Wednesday. But thank you, Ms. Krantz. Thanks, thanks to your, your folks for the hard work they...
Thank you. They've done a great job. They've done a great job.
And we had, how many kids do we have intern with us? Fifteen at least?
Fifteen, fifteen and twenty.
About fifteen, about fifteen, twenty of our own kids who interned with us this summer. And they were all over the place working. And they were working ten-hour days.
Yep.
And some of them look like it at the end of the day. It was, it was, it was good. It was good for them.
So I have a question about the, the numbers here on, so we, we have about 350,000 that is, that was carryover. And then we have about 1.15 million roughly that is...
Total. That's total.
1.1.
1.15 is coming because of extra enrollment, correct?
Correct.
That's a lot, how many, that's a lot of extra enrollment. And I mean, that's, I'm looking at 1.15 million thinking, I mean, that's what, 10, 10-plus headcount, right?
Typically, if you look at our enrollment, traditionally, and this is true in most districts, your enrollment as of October 1st is generally your highest enrollment. So that becomes a number that you see your facilities and so forth use because you need to have enough classrooms, teachers.
Correct.
But actual payment comes from the state on the March 30th numbers.
Okay.
And, and traditionally, that number is less. The last, this past year, our actual ADM was higher on March 30th than what it was on October 1st.
Yeah.
And that's what's driving the increase this year, primarily in those revenue numbers.
It's a one-time, it's kind of a one-time thing this year, but assuming these numbers hold, I mean, that's that much more staff that we have to hire. That becomes more of an operational yearly thing in the future, right?
Right. We anticipated this, this past year. Because you remember at semester, we went and we hired additional staff at the semester?
Yeah.
Because we saw that our enrollment was higher than we had projected. And we were able to add positions like the, the cybersecurity position at Blacksburg High School at the semester mark.
Yeah.
Instead of waiting until next year to add the position, we went ahead and added it mid-year. So that, that may be an opportunity again this year to, to do it right up front.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll have to wait and see.
Correct.
Our projected enrollment from the budget...
We budgeted 9,700.
Was 97 even?
Correct. And, and on March 30th, our number was 97.07.6. So...
Yeah.
So we anticipated some of this and were able to absorb it in some of...
That point-six kid.
I don't calculate it. It's a...
We are precise.
So, so we anticipated some of this, and some of this we were able to absorb because of that. Where, where I'm going with all of this is I don't want, you know, I, I want, I want to make sure that, that, that when we communicate this to the Board of Supervisors, that they are aware exactly what this means now and what it means for the future. Because I, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to interpret that. But I, I don't want it to be interpreted as, oh, we, we have too much money, you know, so...
Oh, no, we would never give that impression.
Yeah, I mean, at the, at the end of the day, the increase in the ADM is there as long as the students are here.
Correct.
So it's a recurring. But you have the educational requirements that we as a district have to comply with.
Correct.
The minute our enrollment would go back, those dollars would go away from us.
That's right, yeah.
So it's not, you know, something that they elected to take out of their budget and give to the school system.
Sure, you know, I understand that.
Something that's tied to the students and the services for which the district has to provide.
I understand that, yeah. I've just, I've seen this come up in the meetings before, and I'm not, you know...
We've had conversations with them before.
So I just want to make sure.
And it's one thing when it comes up, because we've had money left over that we didn't budget the right way, okay? But it's another thing when the students...
Sure. Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
We don't have a lot of control over that.
And as Dr. Meyer said, the only money out of the budget that was what you would generally call a carryover was only 355,000.
350,000, out of 115 million, yeah.
That's the one, that's the one we need to...
Right.
The motion to approve that, that amount.
Well, I want you to, I'm asking you to approve both so that then it allows the Board of Supervisors Monday night at their meeting on the 12th to actually approve that appropriation as well, which then allows us to move forward spending this funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation. Then it is the carryover part in the amount of 355,000 with some change.
And, and the new revenue.
And the new revenue, 1.141. Thank you, Marty. Thank you. Who's second is it?
I second.
I forgot that he's still on there. I'm glad. Any other discussions or questions to Mr. Krantz? We're all good. Then, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
We approve them.
Okay, next, Ms. Krantz.
Keep, keep staying, keep standing.
Standing here?
Yes, sir.
Very exciting news today from the county. We have been told they have been working on this. And today, they showed us that they were working on this. We have a resolution before you to issue general obligation school bonds to start the work on CPS, CES, and Bellevue. Previous resolution will allow the school, will allow the Board of Supervisors to issue general obligation school bonds to fund these projects. And so would you like to explain a little more in regards to this?
Yes, sir. So we've been working with the county. The county's decided, based on discussions with their financial advisors, Davenport, that a good program would be under VSPA, which is the state, and all schools put in their request. So they believe that that's the proper time to do that. The amount of the requests is, and this amount can change depending on, on when we go to market. The belief is that the funds will be available in October. So that's a big plus for instead of doing their own bond issue by themselves, it would take longer. The second part of it is that the issue costs are less because you're able to pull all the different localities that are going to participate in the, in the program than if the county had done it as an individual. So they're asking for right now tentatively 35.5 million. That's for the renovations and additions at Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Bellevue Elementary, as we previously discussed. The difference between the 33.5, the 35.5 and the 35.85 is the projected issuance cost. What this resolution does is it allows the school system to say, we want the bonds. The Board of Supervisors would vote on it on April the 12th. From that, an app, a formal application gets submitted, which we would work in conjunction between the schools and the county on the issue, on that, on that submittal. And then, like I said, the actual closing of it is projected right now in October. What that would mean is we're doing the design work today on both CES, CPS, and VES. We primarily are focused on CES with the straightening of the road and the queue. What this does is allows us to accelerate the design work so that as soon as the construction dollars are available, we could begin work. Now, that's tight, but in a, in a perfect world, a theoretical world, you could be, we could begin doing site work as soon as those construction dollars. So say it's October 15th or November 1st, we could literally issue PIs and be doing our digging November 1st.
So Ms. Morgan, Ms. Morgan, the principal CES is wishing for a perfect world, right?
Why, why not?
So I ask for your approval of this resolution, which would allow us in the county to continue moving forward toward the issuance of those bonds.
So moved.
Second.
We're very excited.
One, one question on that.
Yes, sir.
Is, is it limited to the 35.5 million? Because I thought from reading this that it was up to the 35.5, that the value could change down, but it cannot change up, can't it?
It could theoretically go up, but it's not going to go up a dramatic amount.
Okay.
And the Board of Supervisors will vote August 12, all right?
Yes, August 12, on Monday night.
And just to let you know, our Brad King, our school board attorney, did review this this afternoon.
Yeah, this, this resolution's been approved by the school board attorney. It's been approved by the, by council for the county, both internal and their bond council, and also by the state bond council.
Yay. Any other discussion? Any questions, Marty?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
We are all ready to say all those...
Exciting. I'm, I'm very thankful.
Very surprised.
I'm thankful for the, for the Board of Supervisors for, you know, for...
Moving forward.
For moving forward with us, so...
Absolutely.
And Mr. Krantz and his team? The superintendent to make this happen.
Yeah, absolutely. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Krantz.
So I want to make sure we're there to turn over that first piece of...
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. And so start planning the groundbreaking now. Get your gold shovels out there, Ms. Krantz.
I don't care if it's old rusty shovel.
Oh, that's great.
And it's okay. We need to dress up, you know, warm clothes, umbrellas, snow and whatever.
All right, next is resolution, excuse me, grant proposal, Bruin Academy Year Two. Bruin Academy will begin this year with a cohort of ninth-grade students. The year two funding will support the continuing implementation of Bruin Academy at Blacksburg High School. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our grant for Bruin Academy second year.
Okay. And we do have several grants here. And if you have any questions, Dr. Schultz is here to answer. Okay. Next, 2019 video E VSPA School Security Equipment Grants Program. We apply every year for the School Security Equipment Grants Program. This year, our request focuses on additional interior and exterior surveillance cameras. Technology support these tools and security window film. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented. Explain what the security window film is. It's Harvey. Harvey.
Harvey's in the back video.
He's coming.
I'm surprised he doesn't have a mic that works back there.
The, it's called ballistic film. It covers over and it's a shockproof. It's pretty amazing thing. So you can turn a regular glass pane by covering it with the film to be potentially bulletproof.
Wow, that's pretty good.
So, and that's something new for us. We haven't used before, but that's why I wanted him to, to explain that. So, okay.
Any motion to approve this grant? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other questions regarding that School Security Equipment Grant? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our grant.
Okay, next, Secondary School Security Camera Update. MCPS has applied for a community-oriented policing services school violence prevention grant that would fund security cameras and video servers at seven secondary schools. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposed as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. You can pick and choose, Ms. Ray, who will be. Any other questions or any questions regarding this one? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the Secondary School Security Camera Grant.
Okay, thank you. Next is 2019 VT NSF Empathy Through Virtual Reality Grant. This is the first of four grant proposals for the National Science Foundation. This grant with the Engineering Education Department would allow students to create and share immersive experiences about themselves to help students find common interest, experiences, and goals. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented.
So, so, go ahead. So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any questions? I'm really excited to see these Virginia Tech NSF different grants that we are having for...
I'm excited to see this, the, the kind of cross curriculum stuff happening. I think that's really important.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the Empathy Through Virtual Reality.
Okay, thanks. Next is the 2019 Virginia Tech NSF Magnets Grant. This grant includes the development of an activity where fifth-grade students will make paper cup speakers while learning about electricity and magnetism. This grant would fund materials and supplies and teacher stipends to support the development of this activity. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any questions?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the grant. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next, 2019 Virginia Tech NSF Physics Internships. This grant includes paid summer internships in the Virginia Tech Physics Department for four MCPS high school students. Mr. Husband will supervise the process for recruiting and placing interns as a work-based learning opportunity. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented. This is pretty awesome.
That is pretty awesome.
Excellent.
May I have a motion to approve this one?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the physics internship grant.
Okay. Next is the Virginia Tech NSF Integrating Physics and Biology Grant. This grant includes a multi-year project at Christiansburg High School that would include summer research and training opportunities for two teachers, new lab equipment, summer research internship opportunities for students, and an annual field trip to a national lab facility. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the grant proposal as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the grant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or any discussion? I'm like jealous. So many fun opportunities for the kids.
This is great.
This would be really cool to go to Oak Ridge. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the Integrating Physics and Biology Grant. And that is end of our grants, I think.
So I have a question. Sure. Do we have a figure on the amount of funds that we save or that are gained through our grants?
We do. I don't have it in front of me. I'll be happy to send you our summary. And I have the running total for this year as well.
Thank you.
Is that, it feels like that number's going up, but I, I don't know if it is. I mean, I mean, the size of some of these grants is significant. I mean, half a million dollars.
Some of this, a lot of this goes back to Julie Farley, who's our, our halftime person between Virginia Tech and Montgomery County. And so we actually, we have two more that are coming right behind this that you'll see. It's actually three in September, more several hundred thousand dollar grants that we're a part of. And the reason is because back in May, I, I was actually able to go over and sit with Julie on a panel with all of the people that are applying for NSF grants at Tech for like two hours and just talk about what is goods, broader impact outreach look like? What does it need to look like to get our teachers in? What, what, what will help our teachers in, be able to participate so that we can do these cool things for our kids? So the, some of these folks, that last one, Dr. Ashkar, I mean, we, she couldn't write a better outreach piece than the, than the trip to Oak Ridge. That's like, there's like $30,000 of lab equipment for CHS that would stay when the grant's over. I mean, they're, they're crazy cool new microbiology things. So that piece with Julie Farley has just really helped that dialogue a lot. And it's, it's just been great.
They remind you who Julie is. She is the, again, the employee that is, is, is the in-between us in Virginia Tech.
The stem seed specialist.
Right. And we pay part of her salary, and they do as well, so we can continue with this relationship with the university.
This is our best summer, I think, maybe ever.
That really helped a lot. I remember the discussions back in the days to initiate that. Because every faculty to write any proposal to NSF, they have obligation to put K through 12 outreach. So tapping that resource is, is wonderful, so...
I have a quick question, too. I apologize. It moved past while I was reading it. And I was like, I missed my chance. On the security cameras, the grant for that, I was just reading to make sure that I didn't overlook, I see what the schools are going to be, and then it's to update them and to do better coverage. But is there any like that are going in the parking lots and things like that? Because I've heard some feedback about not having cameras that cover the parking lots. What kind of causes some issues?
And so I would defer to Harvey on that one as well. But I believe that it's interior and exterior cameras.
Okay.
Now, now, some of them, and some I could say, I can tell you that I don't think that was the plan at all of the schools. Because I know some of them, we know that there, some of the, you know, BMS and CMS, there's...
More the high schools than the middle schools, right?
Specifically at BMS and CMS, there are some spots that they've known for a while that they don't like the coverage. And those are internal areas.
Right.
But I'm, I'm sure that it's interior and exterior.
Right, okay.
Harvey says yes.
Harvey says yes.
I see nothing. That will bring us to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Any matters of unfinished business, board members?
Oh, I have one. So I had asked about field trips a while back as to where our students are going to make, to make sure that we're just not doing the 1950 field trips and we're being as diverse and inclusive as we can.
Okay. So we will get a list, I think, I believe, yes, in the spring, didn't you? I believe so. We were trying to get the year completed. So what we can do is get a complete list of the field trips that were taken by school and to take a look at and get that to the board. So, um, Ms. Switaker can help us out with that.
Any other unfinished business, board members? I am moving on to new business. Any matters of new business? Moving on, moving on to announcements and information. Any announcements, any information coming up?
So the Dialogue on Race Summer Summit will be August the 24th from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Moose Lodge here in Christiansburg. And one of the high points of that will be, we will have students from the ACE program who will be putting in some of their volunteer hours, and they will also be sharing their experience about the ACE program.
Yeah, that's so exciting.
And for those of you who don't know, the ACE program actually came directly out of our law enforcement, law enforcement group with the Dialogue on Race. So we are very proud of how that program is working out. It's a game changer.
I know a lot of us will be there, and we were giving some information to the education committee to report out. And one piece we're giving out, you know, I'm just going to say this just up front, we're real proud of Christiansburg High School this year. They did not have an achievement gap in math for the first time ever. In fact, their black students scored 93% on their pass rates in math compared to the white students at 92%. So it can be done. And we had actually Mr. Dibler, same type of results at Christiansburg Elementary School. And we had Ms. Morgan present to our principals last week at the administrative retreat as to what they're doing to be so successful. So that gap has been closed there, and it's amazing. Great job. And before we go to close session, I would like to, if we can maybe not go directly to close session, just a couple minutes, I would love for you guys to go and introduce yourselves, some of our new folks, before we go back. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. So don't run, run off, guys.
The next item is looking, the upcoming school board meeting. Our next meeting is August 20. Probably no questions regarding that, so I will not read my entering close session remarks till everybody says aye. Or shall I?
No.
No, go and do that now.
Read it. And then we'll take a break between
Okay, okay. Our next order of business is close session. May I have a motion to go into close session to discuss three personnel matters and nine religious exemption requests as authorized by section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia?
Second.
My motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now we are in close session.